Good evening, welcome to the 7:30 regular meeting for Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Perrow, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in bowing your heads. We come tonight, oh God, recognizing what an honor it is to serve this community by representing our citizens on city council. We thank you for the peace upon our city and may it bring further the dialogue, understanding, and equity for all. We are reminded of our need for wisdom and clarity of mind as we consider and act on the businesses that is before us. Therefore, we seek your wisdom from on high and ask as we give our full attention to each agenda item and to those that speak to us in these chambers, that your spirit lead our decisions. May the outcome of this meeting be a blessing to our city and bring glory unto you. In the name above all names, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic where whose stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearings, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda, and this section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion? Yes.
There was just one correction that I gave to the clerk, which I didn't see it on here, but I'm assuming it is. Just a word. Good deal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would you like to make a motion? All right, is there a second? Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Please cast your vote. No. I'm sorry. You know what? We've been doing it, and you think I would have gotten used to it by now. Voice vote. There we go. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Ayes have it. Motion passed. Thank you. Yes. Oh, okay. She cleared it. All right. All right. Next are public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public, and individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. First is the petition of RNR of Virginia, Jonathan Rose, for a conditional use permit in a B3 community business district to operate a tire store in an existing building at 3139 Old Forest Road. Mr. Martin will provide information regarding this request.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The petition proposes the use of an existing building which was constructed around 1968 as an automotive tire store. The proposed use would be permitted in the existing B3 community business district upon approval of a conditional use permit by council this evening. As part of this proposal, an entrance that is located on Confederate Avenue and closest to Oddfellas Road in this area would be closed, and also additional landscaping would be added to the site to bring it in closer conformance with the city's landscaping coordinates. Overall, impervious area would be reduced, thus an erosion and sediment control stormwater management plan will not be required. There are other automotive-related uses in the area, including two auto parts stores across Old Forest Road, an exhaust business, and also a recently approved oil change facility. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing concerning the petition on May the 13th and recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined in your resolution.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Feel free to come forward. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Will Segler with Cardinal Civil Resources, and I'm representing RNR of Virginia on behalf of Mr. Jonathan Rose, who is in attendance. I can't add much more to what Tom has said. The two major elements are the closing of the Confederate Avenue entrance closest to Old Forest Road and the addition of landscaping. It's wonderful to have somebody take over an existing building so that it doesn't become a blight, and we'll answer any questions that you've got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Segler. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Are there any emails or phone calls from citizens? All right. Thank you. There's no rebuttal needed, so the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. And Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the approval of the resolution.
Thank you. The motion's been made in second. Further discussion, Councilmember Wright?
It seems like an excellent use of the building. I remember when it was a carpet store, so I'm glad to see it being remodeled for something else, and I wish them luck with the project.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Nothing to add, just congratulations and thank you.
All right. Thank you, and I will take a... Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Martin, as we look at Old Forest Road, I've said this before, I think we need to formulate a plan for the entire Old Forest Road corridor, just to understand traffic along it, how the city wants it to look and feel in the long term. We've seen some pretty rapid new development in that area specifically: two auto stores, a, I guess, an oil change location. This now, for tire service, as well as the dialysis center, has gone up basically in a three-block stretch. I just think this whole corridor looks, warrants a look, and to make sure that it is being developed in a way that's consistent with the city's expectations, and is done in a way that won't congest and clutter it over time. I'm going to support this. I think it's a good adaptive reuse of the building, but I think, as a parting wish, I'd like to see that carried out if possible. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Councilmember Hegelson?
Just one thing on that. It is a zone B3, right? It's not a rezoning, it's simply a conditional use permit, so it's a business that was in there and a business that can be utilized. I think where difference would occur if there's a rezoning. Wouldn't that be correct, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir. The B3 zoning that is there allowed the carpet store by right. The automotive use is a little bit more intensive, thus the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No further discussion. I'll now call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Ayes have it, and the motion is passed. Good luck with the project. Thank you. Next is the petition of Centra Health, Joe Archimbo, for a conditional use permit in an RC conservation district, an R4 high-density residential district, to allow fill within the 100-year floodplain to facilitate improvements to the Summit Lake spillway at 1400 and 1700 Enterprise Drive. And I'll turn to Mr. Martin for presentation. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My wife is an employee of Centra Health, which makes me a member of a group, spouses of Centra Health employees, which has more than three members. Even though my wife is an employee of Centra Health, I'm able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively... I'm glad there was a comma there rather than "fairly objectively," Walter. Thank you. Fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, so I will participate in the discussion of and vote in the Centra Health's request for a conditional use permit.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hegelson. Thank you. Uh-huh. Mr. Martin?
Okay. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the purpose of the fill that's proposed is to facilitate improvements to the emergency spillway for the Summit Lake. These improvements are required by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Safety Regulations. A corresponding amount of cut volume is proposed to offset the proposed fill volume. As you know, we are very careful about approving fill within the 100-year floodplain, and the city's comprehensive plan is very clear about when the city should consider it, and staff feels that this is one of those instances. The city's comprehensive plan 2013-2030 recommends minimizing fill or development within the 100-year floodplain and wetlands, except as required for water resources management, which we believe this is, and passive recreational projects. Summit Lake does provide a regional stormwater, aesthetic, and recreational amenity for both the Summit and Windhurst neighborhoods, so thus improving the spillway is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on May the 13th and recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined in the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name's Mike Wilson with Hurt &amp; Profit, the engineering firm, helping out the Summit with the design improvements. And we've been working, as Mr. Martin mentioned, we've been working with the Centra for a number of years, keeping their dam in compliance with DCR dam safety. Several years ago, we've gone through an analysis of the rainfalls and different things that the DCR requires, and it was found that the dam could not pass the required 90% PMF storm to safely pass that without causing trouble. So, we did a PER for them, they evaluated up options, and this improvement is one of those that came out of that in order to widen the spillway to pass that required storm from DCR dam safety. We worked closely through the process of the design, meeting with the city of Lynchburg when we saw that this was in the floodplain, to discuss that with them and figure out the best course of action for trying to do this, to get this to go forward. And that's where we went through the conditional use and going with the offsetting fill, so there is no additional fill to the floodplain. We'll be here if there's any questions that you do have, or anybody has a need for the rebuttal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any emails or phone calls concerning this matter? Thank you. There's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilmember Perrow?
Madam Mayor, I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Perrow, further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Martin, thank you for your explanation on why this is permitted by the comprehensive plan. As you know, I'm very conscientious of filling either a floodway or other areas. We've had this across on Rock Castle Creek a couple times, and I've not supported it. This is a balanced fill. Two reasons I'm supporting this. It's a balanced fill. There's a cut on one side and a fill on the other, so the net effect of the floodplain should be de minimis and hopefully nothing. This is also, and I didn't hear this, but in Mr. Wilson's presentation, it's to improve the spillway, and this is the emergency spillway, in case we get an event like we had that overflowed the College Lake Dam. The College Lake Dam does not have an adequate spillway like this one is designed, so this also protects for the safety of people downstream of it, and that's another reason why it's important to do this, and that's why DCR required it to be done, so I'm happy to support this.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Again, I support it, again, because there were no objections from the Planning Committee, and also it's many for improvements, so I support the project.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Mr. Martin and Mr. Perrow, and I guess the engineers for that, because I too don't like to fill in a floodplain, but I think it sounds very palatable. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Thank you. The ayes have it, and good luck with the project. Thank you. Next is conducting a public hearing in accordance with Section 15.2-2606.A of the Code of Virginia 1950 for the issuance of up to $42 million of tax exempt general obligation public improvement bond anticipation notes. And I'll turn to Ms. Witt for this presentation. Thank you.
During the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget discussions, city council was presented information regarding what came to be known as on-time financing. This financing strategy was recommended to provide the flexibility to fund capital projects as the funds are needed. In June 2018, the city established the first iteration of the on-time financing strategy, and this is the continuation of that strategy. On April 29, 2020, the city's financial advisers, Davenport &amp; Company LLC, distributed a request for proposals to over 25 local, regional, and national lending institutions. Courtney Rogers with Davenport &amp; Company is here to make a presentation on the results of the RFP and present the recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
I'll add to what Donna was just saying, a couple of things. We actually took out about 16 million of the previous line back in January, along with $37 million of new money at an interest rate of about 2.27, almost just under 2.5 percent. So, this is, as Donna said, a continuation of that program. So, this will set the line for the next two years of 42 million, of which it's split between various areas of the city. It's going to be, you know, water, stormwater, sewer, city capital, schools, so it's spread out amongst the various areas of capital that you're spending. In terms of the solicitation we sent out, as Donna said, back in late April, we were kind of waiting for the market to basically get a little bit healthier, because March was a little bit crazy in our world for selling bonds, and as you all know, a lot of the banks were busy doing small business loans and things like that. So, we decided that we needed to keep moving forward, because the plan had always been to come in the spring and get the line of credit. So, we got the RFP out. We had to give the banks a little bit extra time, because a lot of their credit folks were working on small business things. But those came back. We ended up with three bidders: Atlantic Union, JP Morgan Chase, and Truist, the new SunTrust BB&amp;T combination. On page two, you can see the results of the proposals. Atlantic Union could only do half of what we'd asked for, so that put them behind the eight ball, just to start with. Truist Bank, one of the things that we benefited from the previous line of credit was, we did not get charged for money that we didn't use. We only were charged if we drew money down, and Truist, and that was one of our concerns, honestly, going in, was with credit tightening, were the banks all going to come back with a bid or asking for what we called unused fee? And in case of Truist, they were asking for a very, a small amount, but an amount nonetheless, of the unused amount that you can see highlighted in red there. The other thing was their percentage, what they call the credit add-on onto the LIBOR was actually much higher than JP Morgan Chase. So, our recommendation was to go with JP Morgan Chase. Then it came down to, do we look at a fixed rate versus a variable rate? And the problem with the fixed rate is, the banks weren't going to take the risk of rates going up or down, so they're going to go off and do a hedge off on the side, and that hedge then constricts us. They were going to require us to meet a certain drawdown schedule, and if we deviated from that schedule, they were going to charge us potentially with a fee, a penalty, if you will. The other negative was, they were going to charge us if we decided a year from now that we wanted to go ahead and permanently finance money that we had drawn down, they were going to potentially charge us a fee for that as well. So, one of the benefits of going with variable rate is that it allows us, if we want to take out a portion, let's say a year from now, if we decide, if we were drawing money faster than we anticipated and we liked interest rates, we could take out that portion but still have the remaining part of the line available. Just so you know, this is not a revolving line. It's 42 million and not to exceed. If we pull down 20 million, we still have 22 left. If we pull down the full 42 and paid it back, we're done. It doesn't matter. We can't go back, without your permission, go back and do another line. Page three outlines the summary of the JP Morgan Chase that we're recommending. It's a three-year final maturity this time, so we give ourselves a little bit more time. It's 80% of one-month LIBOR. It's very similar to what we had before. The current rate is 110, so it's just a shade above 1%. Again, no prepayment penalty. They do have a minimum draw, they're just basically trying to minimize the amount of paperwork. We have talked to them, and we can do multiple draws in a month if necessary. They do have closing costs for their legal counsel, and we expect to close by the end of the month. We put together for you on page four, just to kind of show you what LIBOR's done, going back to January of 17. It's basically tracked what the Federal Reserve has done with short-term overnight lending rates, if you will. You can see the stars kind of outlined when they started dropping the rates back in the fall of 19, and then, of course, the big drops that we saw back in March to try to keep the economy afloat and keeping money moving. On page five, again, our summary of our rationale is basically the proposal from JP Morgan Chase had the lowest interest rate of all three in terms of the facility fees. No unused facility fees, which was good. In terms of the minimum nominations and things like that, that all works with what we were looking for. It does give us flexibility, and we can prepay without penalty at any time. So, we're asking for your permission on page six. The schedule is to get your approval tonight, and bond council will finalize the documents, and we will close before the end of the month. Madam Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up right now. We've got a little more for the hearing to do. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any emails or phone calls from citizens? All right. Thank you. There's no rebuttal needed then, and the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a quick question. So, LIBOR is the, what, the lender interbank overnight rate, correct?
Offering rate, yep.
Offering. All right. So, and I see where it tracks. I remember 10, 15 years ago, everybody was going with LIBOR. I had a couple LIBOR notes. I've got a LIBOR note now, actually, now that I think about it. But then everything seemed to go away from that. Do you see a trend? Is it coming back to LIBOR? What's the...
Yeah.
Can you give me pros and cons?
Sure. So, the interesting thing is, basically by the end of next year, not this year, but next year, in December of '22, it's supposed to go away. Like, worldwide, but there's trillions of dollars tied to LIBOR. So, the markets are still trying to work out, in the midst of what we're all going through, you know, around the world, what that new replacement's going to be. We're actually working with JP Morgan, have asked for, you know, what are you suggesting that we do? And so, there's going to be some very detailed language as to, you know, what that replacement's going to be. So, right now, the Federal Reserve and all the powers that be on the monetary side for the US have not come to a decision on what the replacement's going to be yet.
So, all the fixed rates here are tied to, I guess, the Federal Reserve rate, or the, I guess, the 10-year, whatever, but a straight interest rate. Well, the variables are tied to LIBOR. I guess the bank sees some sort of protection in LIBOR, because as you said, it's a wonky market right now.
So, the LIBOR is supposed to be basically what banks lend to each other. That's the idea. The interesting thing is, not many banks actually lend to each other, but that's another whole, bonds one-on-one, for another night. But, so, the idea is, what is the replacement going to be? And it needs to be tied to something akin to what the bank's borrowing rate is going to be, and that's the language, the language I've seen so far from JP Morgan, it's going to be something along that lines. It'll be, it's going to be tied to kind of what everybody else does. There's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of swaps, there's a lot of loans. As you said, you've got one that are tied to this, and so, everybody's going to be in the same boat, trillions of dollars worth. And so, we're just going to make sure that, working with bond council, that the language in the documents protect the city in terms of, you know, what it might be, so that we're not going to all of a sudden see a spike in our rate, even though the market hasn't changed.
Did you receive any more than the three proposals, these the top three?
That's the only three, and I will tell you, we just went through this with Albemarle County as well, and we only got two bids there, so...
Do you see any decline in competition with the loss of independency of SunTrust and BB&amp;T?
I guess it could have been. Interestingly enough, they didn't even bid on the Albemarle. So, I think part of it is, you know, timing-wise, and that was one of our concerns going in, was, are we going to have players, anybody, you know, to play? Because there's a lot of money that were going out of the door, the banks, in terms of lending for small business loans and things like that, was, what was the market going to be? We made a lot of phone calls, and we're talking to people, and we're assured that we were going to get bids, and so, you know, we're pleased that we got bids. Atlantic Union didn't even bid in Albemarle, and I think it was because their size was a little bit larger, they were 75 million, so...
All right. Well, I don't have any more questions, unless somebody else does.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, make a motion.
All right. Madam Mayor, we've, you know, the city looked at this process a couple of years ago, with the basically on-time delivery of funds. It saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars by not borrowing, issuing bonds for large chunks of debt, then not being able to spend that down for a number of years. This way, it's like a line of credit. We take it out as we need it, and then we bundle it all up and put it out on a large debt service issuance, so that we get the best value for the taxpayers' money. I think it's an effective way to do this. Ms. Witt and the Finance Department in consultation with Davenport have really structured a good debt plan for the city, so with that, Madam Mayor, I move this resolution.
All right. We will take this in two votes, and so, let me read the first.
I'll move the first one, just to be clear.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Thank you. The motion is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $42 million in general obligation, public improvement bond anticipation notes, and authoring the city, authorizing the city manager, deputy city manager, or the chief financial officer to execute appropriate documents to establish a $42 million line of credit with JP Morgan Chase Bank. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember Perrow or Wilder? All right. Thank you.
One quick question for me. Ms. Witt, was there any difference? You handed us out a packet today. Was that the same as in the... That's what I hoped.
Yes, just making sure you had a copy in front of you.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you. I'll take a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will vote aye also. The motion has passed. And the second motion, I will read that, so everyone, to adopt a resolution amending the FY 2020 general water, sewer, and stormwater funds adopted budgets and appropriate $105,500, $51,088, $25,424, and $17,988 respectively, with resources from the line of credit proceeds for a total of $200,000 for estimated issuance costs. Is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.[1755.45] Okay. Counsel, all right. Councilmember Wright, and followed by the second, Councilmember Perrow. Councilmember Wright, any further discussion?
Uh, no, no, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Perrow.
Madam Mayor, the reason I was confused with my first motion is I couldn't find the resolution. Now, as I'm looking at it, you read this as the second resolution. However, in my packet, and, sorry, this is, this is getting into the weeds here. It's Resolution R-20-309, which is the first resolution, but that's the resolution you just read. So I want to make sure that we've got a resolution numbers consistent with the resolutions that you've read, and I don't see a copy of the resolution that you just read. There...
This one I...
I see it's a multi-page resolution. That one is, that one is 040.
Forty.
Which was technically the second one. But, okay. So as long as we're, as long as we're consistent on our resolution numbers, and as long as we're clear and everything is above board.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Because no, I have R-20-40 on the second one. So, all right.
Is it the R-2-039, the second one?
Is the one we just read, which is the second one we just read.
Right. In the packet.
Before we approve the issuance cost. That was the intent.
Okay. Do we approve, do I do that? So we did it backwards?
No. No, you did it correctly. The numbering may have been backwards.
Right. The numbering is a mistake. So can the clerk clarify the numbering?
I'll make sure that those are numbered correctly. I think I labeled the $42 million one, 040. I can switch those around when I'm doing the resolutions.
That's the motion on, the first one, right? The 42 million. That's the one we voted on.
Right.
Right. The first one for $42 million line of credit is R-20-039.
And the second one that Mr. Wright made the motion on is for the issuance cost of the $200,000, which is -039.
Right.
Well, but we'll rename it to 040.
Right. So if we can please clarify for the record and make sure that the second is R-20-040.
The numbers are not sequential order for the motions.
Right.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Getting a little technical and engineering-like over here.
Rob, and do you have that clarification?
Yeah. I see, I see the short one came first, but I should have numbered them in sequential order.
Just please, yeah. Please make sure it's reflected correctly in the record.
It will be.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All right. Councilmember Nelson, I will now take a voice vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I will vote aye also, and the motion has passed. Thank you very much. All right. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution to authorize the city to contract a debt and issue sewer revenue bonds of the city in the principal amount not to exceed $1,500,000 to finance the cost of reconstruction of a permitted combined sewer overflow or CSO regular structure, regulator structure within the city's combined sewer system, a revenue-producing undertaking of the city, such capital improvements constituting wastewater treatment facilities within the meaning of Title 62.1224 of the Code of Virginia, 1950. And it has Ms. Witt beside it, but Mr. Mitchell, you're here and gonna give us more information.
Okay. Just a summary of the, of this is that this goes towards a combined sewer overflow regulator structure. It's in the vicinity of Piedmont Mills. It's a very complex structure. We even had the University of Iowa design a, a physical model of the proposed structure. So it's a very unique situation. This is a 0% interest loan, so, and it will be paid for by sewer revenues. And I'll be glad to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Ms. Craig, are there any emails or phone calls regarding this matter?
No.
All right. Thank you. No rebuttals needed. The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with counsel. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Have I moved the resolution?
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made in second. And Councilmember Perrow.
This has been an ongoing problem for, and I'm glad to see it's in the, in the pipe, so to speak, and it'll hopefully stay in the pipe. I'd be interested to hear about this later, but I won't belabor the point tonight. So this is going to be good. It will protect structures in the downtown area from future overflows. This is a good thing.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wright.
Nothing to add, except I'm excited to maybe see more details of the engineering. It sounds, it sounds interesting. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson.
I wish that we could have one more item on here, because the first one was record-low interest rate of 1.07. Now we're coming at 0%. So if we had one more a little bit later in our hearing, maybe we would get paid to borrow some money, but I support the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Thank you. I'll call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next is continuation of the public hearing to receive input from citizens regarding the appointments or reappointments to vacancies that will exist June 30 of 2020 in school districts 1, 2, and 3. The clerk of counsel did not receive any more applications for consideration. So the public hearing is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody could speak and throw the name in there.
Right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The council, you did not receive any more names, right? Correct. Okay. Thank you. So is there anyone to speak for themselves here for the council meeting, for the school board appointments?
Or add another name.
Right. Or to add another name. All right. Thank you. With no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with counsel. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to close the public, the public hearing on this item, or adding more names, rather.
Right. Motion's been made in second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson.
I'm just glad that we at least offered that option to open it up for more applicants.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Perrow.
No, ma'am. Thanks.
Any further discussion from council members? All right. Thank you. And we will now take a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. So the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next is public comments. During public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Next, we will hear from a citizen regarding a concern. Ms. Rosie Span Johnson, president of the Lynchburg Chapter of the Links Incorporated. Good evening.
Dear Lynchburg council members and citizens of Lynchburg, the members of the Lynchburg Chapter of the Links Incorporated wish to acknowledge and applaud the outstanding leadership of Mayor Trenae Tweedy. The Links Incorporated is an international, not-for-profit corporation established in 1946. The membership consists of more than 16,000 professional women of color in 288 chapters located in 41 states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom. It is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of extraordinary women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the culture and economic survival of African Americans and other persons of African ancestry. The Lynchburg Chapter organized in 1950 by Pauline Fletcher Weeden Maloney is celebrating its 70 years of service to this community. We are business and civic leaders, educators, positive role models, mentors, activists, and volunteers. In Lynchburg, our members live in all precincts of the city, know the importance of voting, and are leaders in efforts to make our city a better place to live for all Lynchburgers. We applaud Mayor Tweedy for her unparalleled leadership in the establishment and management of the Bridges of Progress, Bridges to Progress program, which brings together businesses, government, faith-based organizations, in a collaborative effort to develop programs to decrease poverty. This shows her understanding of the issue, her empathy for the citizens, and her organizational ability to pull together diverse groups to focus and resolve a problem, and her determination to get the job done. Mayor Tweedy demonstrates that she knows that one route to reducing poverty is to decrease the unemployment rate by improving the job opportunities and skills necessary to qualify for the jobs. Her dedication to workforce development and the youth futures coordinator are just two examples. Mayor Tweedy is a champion for all constituents, whether affluent, middle-class, or poor, all races, both majority and minority, and all genders. She is a fighter against discrimination, is open and transparent on all issues, and tries to be fair, not subversive, when determining the priorities of the services the city should provide. Fairness is one of her driving forces. Even in disagreements on issues, she is gracious and respectful in her communication with others and deserve the same from others. It is shameful the way some of the constituents and even council members have been disrespectful and attacked her personally instead of the issues. That behavior is unacceptable, and as members of the city council, we ask that you lead by example and demand that all other respect the office of the mayor. In closing, the members of the Lynchburg Chapter of the Links Incorporated felt compelled to come forward to ask the council members and all constituents to join with us, to respectfully support and congratulate Mayor Tweedy on the exemplary job she is doing. Lead the efforts to make our city an example, a one which embraces and believes in fair treatment of all citizens regardless of race, gender, or religion. During the COVID-19 pandemic, do all that can be done to ensure that businesses and schools adhere to the governor's mandates, which are designed to save lives while balancing the economic needs of the citizens. Remember that in your role as city council member and our role as citizens, it is anticipated that people would disagree, but it is never acceptable for anyone to be disagreeable or disrespectful. We wholeheartedly stand with Mayor Tweedy and look forward to continuing to help our city live up to its model of being a great place to live, work, and play. Please contact me if there is more the latest of the Links can do to support community initiatives. Respectfully, Dr. Rosie Span Johnson, president of the Lynchburg Chapters of the Links Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next is general business, and this is the section which includes general items of new business. First reading on the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget resolutions. Consideration of introducing a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021 general fund operating budget, excluding external service providers and component units expenditures, and appropriating $194,398,344 for this budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second? All right. Thank you. All right. There is a motion in second. Councilmember Wilder.
No, ma'am. I have no questions. But do we, do we present any information first, or is there anything else to present to us?
I just had a couple of comments.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Witt.
This resolution does look a little different than it has in the past. Previously, we would have a separate vote on the full component units for the school and GLTC. The schools has not really finished their full budget. So we researched with the governmental accounting and auditing financial reporting guidelines. We worked with the auditor of public accounts and also our external auditors, Brown Edwards, and it was determined that the schools and GLTC budgets do not need to be appropriated by city council, but only the general fund contribution, which is included in Resolution A. So I would ask that you strike the words "and" component units from the resolution that's there in parentheses. It excludes only the external service providers, which you will vote on that separately. But this general fund does include the component unit for the local contribution.
All right. Does everyone understand, Ms. Witts?
Yep.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Vice Mayor Dolan?
No.
All right. I will, any further discussion from other council members? Councilmember Hegelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, and I can, I appreciate this budget from all the different curveballs that were thrown at it, and from where we started to where we ended. You know, I still very close to liking to, to vote for it, but I think there's lots of things that are pretty fundamental, you know, where we raise the fees on our citizens with regarding trash collection, where we had some really serious issues that I think were pretty apparent over these last few weeks with regarding public safety, where we need to make sure that they're fully staffed and functioning. You know, over these last few weeks, or last few months, rather, I think we've seen essential versus nonessential, things that met 24 hours a day or three, seven days a week, such as our trash collection, such as our police, such as our fire, such as our water resources. Those are things that I think have been really made apparent to a lot of people, that those are the things that are very critical. Obviously, laid in the budget to be able to make major changes. I would have liked to have seen that over the course of the time. I would like to have seen the fact that we could maybe take a little pressure off of our local taxpayer by, by having a reduction in the, our tax rates. So I do appreciate all the hard work on this, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, Ms. Witt, you're right. This is an unusual budget. This would be the first budget that I've voted for that didn't have the component units, I guess, factored in, in their entirety. So we don't have a true, truly clear picture of some, of a major portion of our budget. So how does that get resolved moving forward? And you, because the budget, the budget resolution forms the foundation of how we analyze the budgets going forward again and again. So all of a sudden, are we going to have, the adopted budget is going to show a significant difference from the adopted budget last year because we're not doing the, the federal allocations? Or how's this going to work?
It's, you're just not going to see the full schools' funding. What they, what was proposed for GLTC, they removed all but $500,000 of the local contribution. So that is considered their full budget. We just, because the council doesn't really have the authority to tell them how to spend their money, only what the contract, the local contribution is, then it's not required to be part of the resolution to vote on their full budget.
So how, so thinking about next year, use GLTC as an example. So GLTC's got a $7 million budget in, in '19, the $7 million in '20, and a $500,000 in '21?
Yeah. So our all funds will look differently, because those funds are not appropriated. So it will be less as far as your all funds number.
So in the budget cycle for '21, for '22, it's, the numbers are going to look really odd.
Well, just the all funds number. Because your contribution, the local contribution, you're still appropriating that to schools. So you'll be able to compare what is contributed to schools this year to what you contribute for next year. So those numbers, that's not going to be that much different.
The detail sheets are going to be different, right?
It'll just be the all funds summary that will be different, because it won't include GLTC or schools.
I still think it's going to be challenging to understand and analyze it next year. So just, just for council's awareness, this... So just, just for council's awareness, this is a little odd, but I understand what you have to do. And to verify, you checked this is in accordance with all general accounting principles that you have to follow
That's correct.
for government operations.
And the first time we included the full school budget and GLTC budget was like 2005.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we didn't do it before then.
So maybe Jeff remembers that.
So, yeah.
Councilmember Hegelson, thank you. Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the one thing that Councilmember Perrow brings up is a good point. And school funding isn't just a function of what the local contribution is. The local contribution is a function of what our composite index is. It's how much is coming from the state to take the pressure off the locality. So if we just see and just look in a vacuum what our local taxpayer is funded, I don't think that tells a true story. Because this year, I think there was supposed to be like $2.5 million that was coming extra from the state. So I do understand the recasting that's going to be very difficult because you normally look at a budget and you say, oh, wait a minute, what happened? To see something that kind of goes where you can make a decision based on previous, so.
Once the school board approves their budget, it's not going to them until June 16th. So once it's approved, I can bring it back to you. And if you want to vote in first quarter, we could do that. I mean, if you still want to vote on it, we could do that.
It'd be nice to have it in there so you can see, as Councilmember Perrow said, because when you have those anomalies, and then it's just a simple, well, it was because of a different accounting method. Well, sometimes a different accounting method may change the whole number. So it'd be nice to see it consistent. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. Just to, so we are going to be, just to be clear, we're going to be revisiting the city COVID relief proposed allocations next, on the 23rd? Okay. I mean, I guess I'll just offer that I think probably with the exception of GLTC and the relief funds that they got, there's not a lot to be pleased about with this, with this overall amount. I mean, I think we can all, we will, I'm sure, disagree on what the city's priorities should be. I mean, for me, it's not enough money for schools, the medical unit that's desperately needed by the fire department, and of course, you know, the wage increases for city staff that we, the needed wage increases for city staff that we had to forego. So there's a lot of, I think, pain in this budget, and I'm hopeful that in the coming months, based on the revenue numbers that we're seeing, which are better than we anticipated, happily, that we'll be able to restore some of that, some of that funding. So I'm looking forward to that, if that should come to pass.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? I'll now call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, and the motion passes six to one. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021 mandated and contractual external service providers budget and appropriating $8,192,056 for this budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, the motion has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been moved in second. Councilmember Wright, do you have any further discussion? Councilmember Wilder? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, I will now call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. Eyes have it. The motion is passed. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021 discretionary external service providers budget and appropriating $29,401 for this budget. This would include Amazement Square, Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, Central Virginia Community College, and Virginia Legal Aid Society. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The motion has been made. Is there a second? All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Wright, do you have any further?
Yes, I think these are really important partner organizations for the community, and I'm looking forward to supporting them tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I agree, and I supported it first go around. I would support it now.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson, followed by Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wright, if you could divide the question of pulling out the Virginia Legal Aid Society based on our budget discussions earlier?
Certainly, if you'd like to vote on that separately.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perrow?
So that sounds like that was a friendly amendment to remove the $12,167,000 of Virginia Legal Aid Society and hold that as a separate motion?
Correct, yes.
Okay, no comment then?
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you, and I will vote aye as well.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next, we will vote again on that same resolution for adopting the external service provider budget and appropriating the amount of the $12,000 amount to Virginia Legal Aid Society and for this budget. Is there a motion?
Moved, so moved.
Thank you, and a second. Motion has been made in second. Further discussion?
I think I, we've obviously discussed this before, and I understand that some members have a, you know, reticence to to vote in favor of the Virginia Legal Aid Society. I think it's an understandable perspective. I mean, I maintain that it is still an important community asset, and they provide services that are critical now more than ever. So I, again, I understand other members' concerns, but I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I also will be voting in favor. I feel that this is an essential service, especially at this particular point in time.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
Just real quick, I'll be voting against it. I can appreciate what they do. It's just especially in times like this, given discretionary contributions, I think that can be reserved to our citizens that make their donations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you. Mine is more of an objection of principle on this one. I supported the Virginia Legal Aid Society for eight years straight, until they sued us. I can't remember. That was three or four years ago. And then, just watching some of their actions, I, I don't, I know they work hard for their clients. I respect that. But I think they take some unnecessary legal risk to prove points, and I'm frustrated by that. So therefore, I'll vote against it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we will take, Councilmember Hegelson?
Maybe. I think this does require a supermajority, correct?
They both did.
Right, yes. Correct. All right, I will now take a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
No.
Councilmember Hegelson?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Eyes have it, and the motion has passed. Consideration of Introducing a Resolution Adopting Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Fund Budgets for Other Funds and Appropriating the Sums of Each Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made in second. Further discussion? Councilmember Wilder?
It's pretty much laid out in the Section D about what we're appropriating for, for the various services, from the fleet to the water fund, to the various other funds we have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright? All right, any further discussion? I'll now call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, and the motion passes. Next is E, Consideration of Adopting a Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program Budget. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Perrow, further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Capital investment is near and dear to my heart. This is how we keep the city growing, how we keep the buildings fresh and really serve the people. So, yes, ma'am, I support this absolutely.
Councilmember Wilder?
We have discussed this in length. I'd like to go ahead and pass the motion.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Eyes have it. The motion is passed. Next is F, Consideration of Introducing a Resolution Adopting the Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Budget and Appropriating $15,169,570 for the City Capital Projects Fund, $3,053,086 for the Schools' Capital Projects Fund, $1,400,000 for the Airport Capital Projects Fund, $3,560,000 for the Water Capital Projects Fund, $8,030,000 for the Sewer Capital Projects Fund, and $880,000 for the Stormwater Capital Projects Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made in second. Further discussion? Councilmember Perrow?
Same, same point as I made previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
No other comments.
All right, further discussion? Thank you. I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
I will vote aye as well. Eyes have it. The motion is passed. Next is G, Consideration of Introducing a Resolution Appropriating $50,000 of the Fiscal Year 2021 Reserve for Contingencies Funding for Use by the City Manager for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you for this resolution. And a second? Is there a second? All right, the motion for the resolution has been moved by Councilmember Wilder. Further discussion? Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan? Any further discussion? All right, the motion has been made, and I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion has passed. Thank you. Next is H, Consideration of Adopting a Resolution in accordance with Section 58.1-3524 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to set the personal property tax relief rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 at 41.98%. Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, motion has been made in second. Vice Mayor Dolan, further discussion?
Not really. We approved this when we were doing our budget planning.
All right, Councilmember Perrow?
Aye, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? All right, I will call for a voice.
If Donna wants to explain why it's not 41.9764.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Eyes have it. The motion is passed. Thank you. Next is I, Consideration of Adopting an Ordinance to amend and reenact Sections 34-12.1 of the Code of the City of Lynchburg, 1981, as amended the amended sections relating to sewer rates. Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, so moved?
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Wilder? Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan? All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I understand this rate. It's a rate increase that is very minor, but in this kind of time, I thought we could have done a little bit. I appreciate Mr. Mitchell presenting and saying that income may have been able to allow it not to be increased this year. So I wish we could have done that, but I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Council, oh, Councilmember Wright?
Well, just sort of to that point, Mr. Mitchell, would you be able to explain the rate itself and why council's been requested to make this action?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Would you be able to explain the amendment, or sort of the amended sewer rates, sort of to Councilmember Hegelson's point about why this is being recommended?
Well, it's, obviously, this was proposed prior to COVID-19, and we don't really have a crystal ball projecting what the median household income is going to be a year from now, when this would be affected, effective. And, well, when the rates, when we have to do the compliance issue with the CSO consent order. So each year, in December, we file a report to the state, and one of the components is our sewer rates have to be a certain percentage of the median household income, 1.25% at least or higher. And based upon our projections, when we put this together, it appeared that we were going to be under that threshold. As it stands right now, we don't know what it's going to be. It's going to be very close either way. If median household incomes drop or remain fairly flat, then we may be in compliance, in which case, we probably could avoid the rate increase. The other rate increases that are included in here are the industrial surcharges for the high-strength waste, and that's really to get it more close to the cost of service. So other components of the rates aren't subsidizing the industrial components. So they're still way under what the actual cost of the services that we provide, but this would get it a little bit closer.
If we find that the rate is in fact in excess of the 1.25% come September, will we have an opportunity to revise the rate to match up with income?
Well, at that point, it would be December of 2021, so the rates would already have been enacted for over a year at that point. We would, we would look again at the rates for the following year to see if we could hold them flat. It's never an exact match, and usually, we're over a little bit to give us a little bit of a buffer. But we, if we were, if we were over the median household income, probably the following year, we would not propose a rate increase unless we needed it for other reasons.
But we're just, the, just to clarify for folks who may be watching, we're in large part doing this just because it is a requirement of the consent order.
Based upon our assumptions, it's a requirement of the consent order.
Thank you. Any further discussions or questions? All right, I will call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, and the motion passes six to one. Next is discussion of the City Code, Section 27-29, relating to the Declaration of Curfews in Times of Emergency. Ms. Severcek will provide a brief summary of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Last Monday and Wednesday, council held emergency meetings to adopt a new city code section relating to the Declaration of Curfews in Times of Emergency. On Wednesday, council set an expiration date of this, of this evening for this ordinance. Earlier today, I signed the necessary paperwork to rescind the declaration of an institution of curfews that I declared last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday due to civil unrest. Council asked staff to bring this back to you today for discussion. No action by council is necessary, as again, this ordinance does expire this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Madam Mayor, after giving this a lot of thought, and I believe that everybody sitting here hated the fact that we had to do this, however necessary it was to make, to ensure peace, and we've, we've achieved that peace, it seems, and I'm so thankful that we have. But I would be hesitant to reinstate this ordinance. I think we should just let it expire at midnight tonight. And if there is a need in the future, and hopefully, we pray that there will not be, then the manager may call on emergency meetings of council, and the ordinance is on the shelf and could be used. And that, in fact, provides a little check and balance in the whole process. So I think we just let it expire and take no action tonight. And can move on to the next agenda item.
All right, thank you. Council, thank you, Councilmember Perrow. Councilmember Wright?
I agree. I think we should let it expire and move along.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So... Next is consideration of approving an ordinance confirming the city manager's declaration of an institution of a curfew in the city of Lynchburg. Ms. Severcek?
Thank you. Again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this, this ordinance simply confirms the declaration and institution of the curfew that I had the authority to institute last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and I ask that you approve this as the time has passed.
Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, may I ask that we, is it possible to split these into two? Because I abstained on voting on the first, on the June 2 ordinance, and wouldn't want to vote on, on that again, if that's what we're being asked to do. I wouldn't want to express an opinion on it now, given that I abstained from it the first time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, oh, Perrow, did you have any questions? You were explaining. Okay, all right, thank you. So we will separate these into two motions?
I voted on the June 2 motion.
I'm sorry, I, sorry, I had been drinking too much water and coffee.
Okay, thank you.
We're splitting the confirmation of the city manager's declaration of a curfew into two, given that you and I were not at the first.
Okay.
So we can abstain from that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Okay, I do not object to splitting the, splitting it, but we want to make sure that we have the consent of council to allow members to abstain.
Right. All right, do we have that consent for council to allow both members to abstain? All right, thank you, we do. All right, so we will be consideration of approving the ordinance confirming the city manager's declaration of an institution of a curfew in the city of Lynchburg.
I'll make that motion. Oh, wait, hold on. Are we doing the first one, is the curfew or the declaration of the emergency?
The first one was being to approve the manager's declaration on June 1. The second motion would be approve the manager's declaration on June the 3.
So the first would be the emergency?
Right.
Well, we, council has already approved the emergency, so nothing needs to be done. You know, that was done at the meeting last week, the special meeting on the 3.
The institution on the 3, I understand, thank you. All right, so, so we basically met on the first, sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, go right ahead.
So we effectively met on the first during the, during the emergency meeting, voted to do this. And then on the 3, we reconvened to reconfirm that.
Right.
And then I was not
There.
there, able to vote on the, on the 3, but I feel comfortable voting for it. So, Madam Mayor, I move the, the ordinance confirming the, on June 1. I think it was necessary. I, I firmly believe that that was a lawful meeting, that we, council did what we needed to do in accordance with our, our rules and procedures, as our rules and procedures state, that we can change our, our rules of procedure. I stand by that. And I thought, honestly, I thought the city manager was going to make that a mandatory curfew that night, and, and hindsight, I wish we had. I wish we had. So, yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, I will now take a voice vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Abstain.
Abstain? Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will have a vote on the June 3 declaration. And is there a motion for that?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you make the motion? Thank you. We've been rolling through them, I understand. Councilmember Wilder's made the motion. Oh, Councilmember Wright, second it. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was not there, but I still, as much as I, and I couldn't comment during, during the meeting on the 3 because I had a, a prior engagement. But this was an agonizing decision for both council and the manager. You know, it wasn't done lightheartedly, and it was done with the, with the, with the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, and, and property in mind. It was ugly. It hurt businesses. It hurt people's livelihoods. And it was awful. And, but I'm going to support this because it was the right thing to do, and it needed to be done. But because we did it, we now, as I, as I stated earlier, we have a measure of calm, and peace has settled in our city, and we can have good, meaningful dialogues that can be constructive and move our city forward, and hopefully implement the real change that is needed. So I'm going to support this, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson?
So, Mr. Irwin, so this ordinance, which was approved on the 3, what is the purpose of us approving it again? Are we, is it pulling it, or what's, I don't?
No, the, the ordinance that was adopted by council gave the city manager the authority to declare a curfew during a state of emergency. And one of the provisions in the ordinance says that if the manager declares a curfew, then that declaration has to be approved by city council at its next regular meeting in the same way city council approves the manager's declaration of an emergency. So all you're doing is approving the fact that on June the 3, the city manager declared a curfew.
And so we did that on the 3. I think that passed five to one, right?
That's correct.
And so, so now we have to, is it like a, two readings, like our budget, or what?
No, this is just, you're coming back because the ordinance that city council adopted, to make sure the city manager doesn't lightly declare a curfew, the manager's declaration of a curfew has to be reviewed and approved by city council. Tonight's vote says, the council believes that the manager was correct in exercising her authority to declare a curfew. That's all it does.
So that's all this one is doing? So this has nothing to do with the, the fact that it, it expires tonight at midnight?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the curfew ordinance. The curfew ordinance is, is scheduled to expire. The, the manager has not asked that it be re-adopted. All this does is approve the declaration of a curfew.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Perrow?
I think this is an example of, of some of the checks, well, one of the checks and balances in the ordinance. So where the manager can proclaim the curfew, it still has to come back to council to effectively be ratified. And if council disagrees and thinks it's the wrong move to make, then this is, this is the opportunity to vote against it and make that, make that clear. So I think it's a, it's a way that there's a check and balance in the system. It's not perfect, but it, but it's a, it's a method.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Now that I'm clear with what this is, and, and I'm voting against it because I don't think that is appropriate and prudent. You know, in a time right now when we're looking at justice, I mean, justice is about punishing wrong, not punishing evil. I mean, excuse me, not punishing the innocent. And, and so this, I recognize the, the concern. You know, but I think we need folks with the steady hand, not hitting the panic button. I didn't think it was prudent at the time, and I think it looked after the first night on Sunday. Granted, it's sitting in a different chair than the ones that is pushing it and promoting it, but I, I realize it's a tough decision. But I think we, as council members, you know, we're elected to represent the citizens, and I went around lots of citizens, and I didn't appreciate, or they did, told me they didn't appreciate the fact that they were being punished for evil doing of a few. And so, we got 82,000 citizens, we got a big area to, to put a mandatory curfew. I didn't appreciate it. That's why I voted against it on the 3, and I'll vote against this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
I was in favor of the, the city manager's decision because we have a city manager to make those kind of decisions. Someone has to be the leader, especially in a time of crisis. And I, and one thing about it, we are a community. If we were individual person, individual business, it's something different. We are a community, and sometimes communities got to come together, and sometimes we got to make sacrifices for one another. And as a time of a crisis, that we as a community had to come together, not to think about our selfishness senses of our own selves, but about our community and what we make sacrifices for others. That's what we had to do. So I support our city manager, her position. I support that. I wasn't out there at that night. I was at home in the bed. But I support the, the city manager's position that night, because we're a community, and we got to work together. And that's how, how communities work. We are unified as one. We can't have this one doing this and this one doing that. That's not right. That's how we become divided. That's how we become, have so much discord in a community when we're not together on the issue. And at some point, our community, and one thing, I watched that funeral today, and one thing, the person, the aunt, the aunt said that George Floyd taught us to love again, to have some compassion. And we need more compassion in our community for one another, and not about ourselves, but have some compassion for one another. And that's what's lacking. It's always about me, me, we need to have some compassion and show some love for one another and appreciate someone that stands up and makes a decision as a leader. And we need to support our leader in times of crisis. If not, we're going to be divided. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder, any further discussion? Thank you. I will be calling now for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
No.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will be voting aye. Ayes have it, the motion is passed. Thank you. Next is consideration of selecting the date for the city council organizational meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, council member?
Can we invite Mr. Farady to come join us at the podium to, because his input on that would be helpful, wouldn't it?
Oh, for the next vote?
For the organizational meeting.
For the next organizational meeting? That's fine, unless you want to sit there or come forward. Thank you, Councilmember Perrow, for sitting back. All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Irwin, if you would provide us with a brief summary?
Okay. The state code provides that at the, at its first meeting in July, that is the organizational meeting for city council. And city council is required at that time to adopt its schedules, schedule of meetings for the upcoming year. And council typically does that by simply re-adopting its rules of procedure, because the dates for its regularly scheduled meetings are spelled out in its rules of procedure. Typically, during the, its organizational meeting, council also elects the mayor and vice mayor. Now, state law doesn't require that. That can be done at a later date. But typical, council typically does that then, and council typically holds the organizational meeting at a special meeting before the first regularly scheduled meeting. So the mayor and the vice mayor will be elected in order that they can preside at the first regular meeting in July.
Thank you. And right, it's the 14th. And so that is also the dates scheduled for the physical development committee and council's meeting. So it would be best for us if we selected a date prior to the 14th. So the suggested dates are Wednesday, July 1, Thursday, July 2, Monday, July 6, Tuesday, July 7, Wednesday, July 8, or Thursday, the 9. So is there a preferable date for everyone? Do y'all?
I'm here every day. It makes no difference.
All right.
July 1st or 2nd is good. I mean, if you want to do it right away.
Okay, so July 1 is a Wednesday, and July 2 is a Thursday. Councilmember Nelson?
First or second?
The only problem I have with Thursday is a, like a lunch, before lunchtime thing.
This would be later on in the day, wouldn't it?
Uh, last time, I think we did it in the morning, like 10 o'clock, I think? Okay.
What if we do 10 a.m. on the 1st?
On Wednesday, July 1, 10 a.m. All right, all right, Councilmember Nelson, Mr. Faraldi? All right, thank you. Wednesday, July 1 at 10 a.m. Will be the organizational meeting, is what the date we've selected. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All right, I will call for the voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember, no, Perrow?
Aye.
All right, just got you that time. Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And ayes have it, the motion is passed. Thank you. Uh huh. All right, next is consideration of a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration of a prospective candidates for the position of city manager pursuant to section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And B, consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments to the following boards, commissions, or committees. City Employee Appeals Board, Economic Development Authority, Historic Preservation Commission, Martin Luther King, Lynchburg Community Council, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Museum Advisory Board, Virginia First Cities Policy Committee, and Youth Services Citizens Board. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? Thank you. I'll call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. We are now in closed meeting. Thank you.